Board to order, may I have a roll call, please?
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Marquardt.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim. Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
President Byrne is participating by telephone this evening, the minute should reflect that. And due to the difficulty I think he'll have in trying to run the meeting from the, by telephone, I would advise that we have a motion to appoint a temporary chairperson versus a president pro tem, just for the purpose of running the meeting this evening. This will allow the president to, the merit to continue to vote and act and sign documents as the president, but the temporary chair that you select will simply run the meeting from this location. So if we can have a motion to appoint a temporary chairperson.
I vote for Tom Cook to serve the purpose of the temporary chairman.
Yes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Marquardt.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Okay, so.
Is there any way to turn up the box so I can hear it better on my phone?
We'll see. I don't know what the. Bear with us just a moment, Roger.
What's that?
Bear with us just a moment. We're getting Mike to set it.
You know what, maybe you could put the mic next to it, you know, the handheld mic?
Well, no, you've got the mic, you've got the mic next to you and we can hear you just fine.
Yeah, I know.
What you need is a speaker next to it to pick up what we're saying in here.
Well, can sort of jack up your volume a little?
I believe he's doing that right now, which he did.
Yeah, but we don't want to get too high. Yeah, we're getting feedback now.
Oh, yeah, if you get feedback, you know.
We should be good.
Right at the edge now, that's good.
We should be good right now.
Yeah, okay, I'll listen.
Okay. So then we should just get, okay, all right, so since we have a quorum and done a roll call, would everyone please stand for the pledge?
Can't you guys stand for a pledge?
Okay. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board other than the Park District? Okay, seeing none, then let's move to the Park District.
With a host of unprecedented challenges in the rearview mirror, are you looking forward with optimism, renewed strength, and determination? We at the Vernon Hills Park District are. We turned obstacles into opportunities to serve each of you in unique ways. And we're proud to show you a little of what we mean. Our impressive history of building strong intergovernmental agreements to lower taxes, to deliver quality services at reduced costs, and to share properties, proved to be more important than ever during the recent trying times.
Well, the relationship with the Park District, between the Park District and Hawthorne District 73 has obviously been longstanding. This is just one example, Hawthorne School for Young Learners, where District 73 partnered with the Park District to build a kindergarten center, saving our taxpayers millions of dollars due to the fact that we were able to utilize pre-existing gym space and using their land. The Park District did donate the land for us to build this facility. And we continue to build that partnership and that relationship and how we utilize these facilities day in and day out to support the entire community and not just our youngest learners in District 73.
And with constraints on human interaction, we developed programs to bring you together safely, to boost your physical and mental health, and to get you back to the great outdoors that some may have taken for granted before.
I have enjoyed these gardens for six years, and it's a wonderful resource for all of us. And I started in my garden the year after the gardens opened. This is a wonderful resource for all of the community. A lot of the people that have the gardens live right around in this area. I enjoy it tremendously, and it has become like a little community of its own.
Speaking of the great outdoors, environmental protection, conservation, and sustainability remain as pillars of our commitment to turn life into living for each of you.
We've had, every time I've been out here, we've had people stop and either thank us or inquire about what we're doing. But there's been people that have been stopping, saying that they've lived here for 20 years and had no idea that this stand was here until we restored it. And now they walk through the savanna, now they walk along it, and they get to observe and enjoy the beauty of this pre-salement oak stand.
One of the many recent lessons learned by society as a whole is one that we at the Park District have long embraced and continue to strive for, namely, social equity. Regardless of age, ability, nationality, or culture, we provide programs and activities for you.
The partnership with the Park District has allowed spacing for these programs to take place. The participants really gain a lot from it, they're all very happy. They make friends, they really enjoy it, and they just have an incredible time.
Yes, together we face challenges, and more important, we've overcome them. We've never been happier to call Vernon Hills home, to be part of a community that stands united and endures. And we've never been prouder to work for the Park District, to be part of a team solely focused on your health and wellness. Through strategic partnerships and collaboration, focused on the wants and needs of a diverse community, we at the Vernon Hills Park District work diligently to connect with everyone because we're all in this together.
It was, huh? So Jeff Fuhrer, the executive director of the Park District, is Commissioner Bruce Robbins. Okay, thank you, Mike. So that was just a video that we had to include in our application. So for the board, we wanted to come tonight before the village board and staff to share this award with you. Certainly, there's a lot that goes into this application that you didn't know about, but a lot of what we stressed was our intergovernmental agreements with the village of Vernon Hills and just other public entities. And we feel like that was something that kind of took us over the top in terms of how we were looked at and judged on this award. So the National Gold Medal Award is the highest award that any Parks and Recreation Agency in the country can receive. There's over 8,000 Parks and Rec agencies. We're in a classification of 30,000 and under. Typically, there's about 35 to 40 applications that the judges will peruse and vote on. But there's significant criteria you have to meet to even apply for this award. So this is our third year, we were a finalist in both '19 and '20, and we were up against, they narrow it down to four communities. We're up against the Deerfield Park District this year. It was their first year, we were up against East Ocean, Pennsylvania, and Fountain Hills, Arizona, were the other three communities that we were pushed up against. And so we were in Nashville just a little over a week ago for this national award, several of the board members and staff members. And it's just a joy when you get, when you hear Vernon Hills Park District, you know, it's just a great feeling. It's certainly just a tribute to our staff, our board, our community. And you can just see, I think, just that five-minute video gives you just a small depiction of, you know, what our community is all about. So we're on a little bit of a tour to just go around all our public bodies and just want to say thank you on behalf of the Park District for your continued support of, you know, our mission. And we wanted to just bring this award tonight to, you know, have you just take a look at it and thank you, just we're here to just say thank you. Commissioner Robbins, anything you want to add?
I just wanted to say it's a great honor, and very few park districts in our state have won this over the years. And we want it due to basically our executive director, Jeff Fuhrer, and a wonderful staff that we have.
Thank you. Any questions anybody has or?
Well, congratulations on a fine honor, well deserved. You guys work really hard, you're a pillar, one of the pillars in our community. And you guys work extremely hard, you have a great team. And it's one of the reasons my family and I decided to settle here, the parks are just top-notch, and I'm so happy for you guys.
Yeah, I mean, congratulations on this. Part of that video is one of the perfect examples that Dr. Hannigan talked about, the ability to, for all of us working together. It's the same constituency, whether it's the school board, or your board, or our board. And when we work together like that, it saves, it saves the constituency money and that, the fact that they didn't have to build a gym for that young learners' building is a perfect example. So thank you for everything you guys have done for the village.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. Okay, that's all we got. Enjoy the rest of your evening, thank you.
We're trying to pass that award around to take a look at it, but it's, it's difficult to lift. That's a heavy award.
Put three nails in the wall to hold.
Okay, next item, the assistant village manager.
Good evening, everyone. Remaining events for 2021 include Halloween and trick-or-treat hours, which the chief will address under his report, and the tree and menorah lighting event. The tree and menorah lighting event is traditionally scheduled for the Saturday after Thanksgiving and is conducted at the Vernon Hills Muni at 4:30 PM. For this year, the date is Saturday, November 27. During 2020, in place of the village's traditional tree and menorah lighting event, stakeholders organized a vehicular escort of Santa, which included the Vernon Hills Police Department, the Countryside Fire Protection District, and the Vernon Hills Park District, who traversed through most residential subdivisions over approximately three hours, ending at the municipal golf course. Santa eventually joined Mayor Byrne, Vernon Hills Pageant Queens, and members of Public Works at the muni for a virtual tree and menorah lighting, which was shared as a Facebook Live event. Last year was atypical with the pandemic, safer-at-home guidance, restrictions on assembling inside and at businesses, and with restrictions on gatherings. For 2021, stakeholders have conducted conferences and discussed concepts and believe returning to our traditional assembly at the Vernon Hills Muni for a tree and menorah lighting at 4:30 PM would be an opportunity to reconnect and celebrate together. There are currently no restrictions on outdoor gatherings and no safer-at-home guidelines. Staff does not believe that we would experience the same level of community engagement as we discovered during 2020. The muni would be open and again, offer cookies, cider, and hot chocolate to those in attendance free of charge. And staff is proposing pitcher opportunities with Santa, which will be outside in a socially-distanced setting. The plan does include Santa being escorted by the Countryside Fire Protection District and the Vernon Hills Police Department from the fire station at 600 Deer Path, starting at 4:15 PM and traveling directly to the muni for an arrival just before 4:30 PM. At this time, staff is seeking board feedback on the plan to escort Santa directly from Deer Path, the station on Deer Path, to the muni and returning to the tradition of celebrating the arrival of the upcoming holidays at the municipal golf course.
Anybody have any comments on that? I can't see, yeah, trustee Marquardt.
I'd make a comment that I do have a sled that I actually got from the Forge Club. And it can be used if we care to do so. It actually is sitting at Public Works, picked it up and used it last year at another village, but I ended up getting ahold of it before the buildings torn down, and that goes with it.
Dave is going to comment in anticipation of this concept.
Anticipated that Santa's sleigh might come up in the discussion. Certainly, if that's the board's wishes, to have it on a flatbed and bring Santa in the sleigh, or however Public Works can help, we're permitted to do so. So whatever the board's desire is on that.
Yeah, what's the board's opinion on that? It sounds, it sounds like a good idea.
I should have brought pictures.
Yeah, well, we, I mean, we're going back to things we haven't done in a couple of years, so it's nice.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay, well, the only, the only thing that could be, hopefully won't be a fly in the ointment, is the, any kind of, you know, crazy outbreak in COVID, you know, sicknesses. As far as doing it inside the clubhouse with a couple of hundred people, maybe. You know what I mean? There's a lot of people to be crammed in there.
Do you just maintain whatever current mask ordinance by the state and then try to keep as much outside as possible?
Who's speaking right now? Who's speaking?
Mike Schenk.
Who?
Mike Schenk.
Trustee Schenk.
Yeah, okay, but what I'm saying here is that, are the kids definitely going to be vaccinated? The kids, you know, I mean, five to 11 years old or 12 by then. You know what I mean? Are we hearing, I mean, I think we're hearing good things, but with that said, you know.
Well, what we can do is try to follow the same protocols that they're following at school every day, a three-foot minimum and wearing masks, and keep the number of people indoors to a maximum number. And that would, that would follow any guidelines we need to.
Yeah, rotate, rotate the crowd through, because you have to put everybody in there because then, then it's, you know, you're too close a proximity.
So staff has also had these conversations and our thought and some of our initial discussions with Santa included Santa assembling outside, perhaps either with hay that perhaps Public Works could set up like as a display covered by a sheet, Santa would be sitting on that outside for the socially-distant pitcher opportunities.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure.
And then, you know, the inside, if it was cold, it would be, you know, our thought was more of a warming shelter for those who need it. But a majority of the event, like last, last year, Mayor was outside, and it seemed to, you know, for those that were there, the queens and yourself, it seemed to go very well. And it, you know, we believe that if we follow the same protocols that are in place now, if you did have to go inside the muni to use the restroom, you should be wearing a mask. They have the signage on the doors, but a majority of the event would be conducted outside.
Yeah, and unfortunately, it's not a static situation we're in now with, you know, anything, you know, regarding COVID. Hopefully, you know, the kids can get their shat though, which would be wonderful, you know. So, all right, well, I don't, I don't have anything else other than make sure all the bulbs work. You know? Okay.
And make, and make sure, once again this year, that Santa, who does the chipping, misses occasionally. I appreciate the fact that you changed that, because when he made it every time, it was not. Didn't like that.
Yeah, okay. Should we march on to Halloween?
Okay, so anything else on this issue? Okay, then, chief of police, the Halloween hours? Now that we have a new village manager, we have Halloween back, so.
That was a bad rub.
No, I think that's well deserved. Let's, in a while, we can continue to blame Mr. Fleishower for a handful of things. No, I did want to bring to the board's attention a recommendation that this year, Sunday, Halloween is on Sunday, October 31. And the recommendation for trick-or-treating hours would be in the afternoon hours of 2 PM to 6 PM. The board might remember that two years ago, when there was a severe weather event, we had to move trick-or-treating hours to that weekend as a result. And we did it in the afternoon hours. I personally went out and visited people in every community, in every neighborhood, and specifically asked parents of children that were trick-or-treating, you know, what they thought of the afternoon hours, what they thought of the weekend event. And overwhelmingly, it was encouraging. They appreciated having a family event, you saw people pulling wagons around neighborhoods, a very communal event with a lot of parents and a lot of families involved. So I wanted to share that, and at the time, I reported back to the board, but I think that this is a, the best practice for this year, particularly Halloween being on the weekend. And I also asked the board to engage in conversations with community members. As I will continue to do, I'll be out there again giving away candy and talking to parents because my recommendation would be going forward, say next year when Halloween would be on a Monday, that it would be wise for the village to consider holding trick-or-treating hours in the weekend before actually October 31. Keep it a afternoon family event on the weekend. Again, this is largely because it kind of makes this a real family-oriented event for the children that are trick-or-treating and really encourages safeguarding their safety, their public safety. What we see happens usually in the hours of darkness on weeknights, when people are trying to get home to take their kids out, running around neighborhood with mask on, it's usually raining. There's a lot of hazards involved there, and some of our neighboring communities have seen children struck. I've seen children struck by vehicles on that night. And it presents some hazards that we can really avoid. So again, this year, I think it's really straightforward, but I wanted to float that balloon, so to speak, with the board, ask them to keep their ears open. I'll do the same. I plan on attending some other community stakeholder conversations about that issue so next year we could be in a position to maybe really feel good about that recommendation. But with that, I'll address any questions or?
I would say it's a great idea, you know? We had more kids in our neighborhood than we've had in probably decades, other than if it landed on a Saturday or Sunday. But, you know, going back, you know, I guess now, last year, you know, it worked out fine.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, and a lot of towns, this is becoming a real popular thing to do, a lot of towns have done this for many years, and it just really changes the dynamics and is really a fun event. The big question is, do you do it on a Saturday and interrupt maybe soccer schedule? Or do you do it on a Sunday and interrupt the football schedule? So that's a question for next year, I think this year is really simple.
Yeah, well, Sunday might be the better of two days. But, you know, the other thing is, what is the Park District's schedule for their, you know, they always have an event at their building and I, you know, is it, you know, is it, I think it's historically before Halloween, so.
Yes, sir.
I mean, just to coordinate with them. And they do it on a Saturday, maybe, maybe even do it on a Friday night, I'm not sure.
Yep, and I've already engaged a conversation there, completely on board this year with the recommendation. And they, the feedback I got was they're strongly in favor of doing it going forward and would coordinate with them. I've made outreach to the elementary school district and hope to talk to their PTO as well. So I think we have time between now and next year to really kind of build that consensus.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to say, whatever you come up with, as far as your recommendation, based upon your due diligence, I would fully support.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, well, we'll bring that back some future day tonight.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, anything else on that? All right, then, nobody else has a speaking part, right? So next would be omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through F?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second? If there are no comments, questions, or? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim. Trustee Takaoka. Trustee Marquardt.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Chairman Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Okay, motion carries. No unfinished additional business, correct? Any new business or communication anyone wants to? Yeah?
You know, the only thing I got to say is as far as, you know, just everybody, you know, trimming their bushes back if they, you know, that's dinner on their property. And then Public Works working on everything that's, you know, on our property, you know? It's because, you know, you got, you got a lot of people out, when Halloween's coming, you know, you're going to have a lot of people out and about. But you had a lot of people out and about now, so in essence, you know, I, everybody needs a trim, just like a haircut, you know?
Okay.
Is Dave there?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, Dave, welcome back, sorry about your dad.
I appreciate the thought. Yeah, we'll make sure to take care of the ones in the public property, and we'll work with Mike on the private ones.
Yeah, yeah, because it screws up sidelines pretty good, you know, in some instances. So, that's all I got.
Thank you.
John?
Yep, thank you, sir. And as a follow-up to that, on all of our communications platforms, there are graphics and information on, you know, taking that extra step of trimming bushes and, you know, making sure the hedges are clear. So we had it in the last edition of the Village Voice and on social media and on the website. And we'll be sure to have it on all three platforms, including Channel 4 preceding this board meeting as well. So that messaging will be there. And second, I just want to take one opportunity.
And second, I just want to take one opportunity to remind everybody, as the seasons change and temperatures drop, the need for cold weather clothing for our most vulnerable, for homeless and at risk, and our veteran populations, and even active service members increases this time of year. In previous years, we organized a co-drive through the various high schools, and we learned last year when the pandemic hit and the kids weren't in school, it was, it was challenging, and one of the things that we did to overcome that was the villages, almost every police department in the area, and participating businesses teamed up with the chamber, and we conducted a co-drive. So, just as a reminder, it was so successful, I believe it was one of the most successful years ever. You'll see this graphic at numerous businesses throughout the village, you'll see it at the police station, Libertyville, Mundeline, Green Oaks, and Vernon Hills, and our muni are all collecting cold weather gear from now until November. So, if you have an opportunity to look at your closet, maybe find something that's not as fashionable as it once was, or if you're just looking for an opportunity to give to a great cause, this is all in support of the Midwest Veterans Closet. We've had Mary in here on a couple of occasions. As you recall, she was the beneficiary at Fall Fest, in which we raised $5,000 for her organization. So, she was in with the chief, myself, and Kevin earlier this week, taking some more, doing some more campaigning, I guess, and preparing some graphics for this effort. So, just a reminder, if you can, make a donation. Big red box right here at the village hall, one at the muni and one at the police department. Thank you for the time.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to say something, Tom.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. So, myself and Roger, and Roger, you'll concur here, we met a woman in our community who has flown under the radar doing unbelievable things for other families across Lake County. Her name is Sue Gandy. She has, she runs, what is she called, Sue's Pantry, out of her home, and she's done this for 12 years. How she's flown under the radar for 12 years here is amazing, because she really, she does it totally, she doesn't bring any attention to herself. She was actually, come to find out, was covered by a local news here in Chicago during the holidays earlier this year, and then also caught a national feed on NBC. And Roger, I think you'd agree, you know, our conversation with her was just absolutely, you know, I've never met a more selfless individual, and we're definitely gonna help her, and...
I was following her mother for a reason.
Absolutely, she's absolutely, you know, along those lines, that's what she does. And the fact that she hasn't gone unnoticed here is really truly amazing. I mean, I've looked on Facebook, there are people who are trying to gain her more attention, so this is what, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna, I'm gonna bring her in for a meeting here to the village, but at the same time, I'm gonna pass on to all the trustees her, her contact information. I want you to go there, and I want you to meet her and let her explain, give her her story. You'll definitely be moved. It's, it was very humbling, and, you know, it was just like, holy crap, I, the fact that she's gone again unnoticed in this community is unreal, and we're definitely gonna help her, and I think, I've talked to some other people...
How many years was it?
Huh? Twelve. Twelve years, and now she's a 501(c)(3).
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, I just want to put that out there. Sue Gandy, and I will text all the trustees her contact information, and you need to reach out to her, and you need to get her story, and you'll understand where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Yeah, and we're gonna try to find her, you know, maybe a vacant store in one of the strip centers, where she can actually, you know, stockpile some of her food stuffs, you know, and, yeah, this is a lady that's, yeah, she, she's a humanitarian to a fault, okay? All right, we're gonna, are we gonna bring her in sometime and put her on the committee at all?
Yeah, but first, we're gonna have a meeting, because I want Kevin and John and Mike to fully understand where she started, how long she's been doing this, and, you know, it's, yeah, it's unbelievable. So, we're gonna start there, and then we'll move it forward, and like I said, I've reached out to some people as well.
They essentially create the point man on this.
Yeah, I got her list and information as well, so I will quarterback this, for sure.
Sounds good. Anything else?
The only thing I got to add is hand handling. I saw, you know, went out on all our, you know, internet, different, you know, whether it was YouTube, or Instagram, or, I don't know, we got tweets, I don't know, we went on to everything, and hopefully, people get an understanding of what we can do and what we can't do. And, I don't know, has staff gotten any feedback on that from going public with that? Hello?
Hold on.
Nope, no?
No, just, just a couple of thank yous on social media for putting the post out there, but nothing more than that.
Yeah, okay, but, you know, yeah, some of the, a couple of emails we got were, you know, kind of like, you know, they're really stirred to a fault, and didn't have a lot of empathy in them, and, you know, listen, you know, I don't think all these people are, all these people are, you know, hustlers, okay, so. All right, well, I don't have anything else to add.
Mayor, maybe it's just worth reminding the board that that topic will be on next board meeting's agenda, with an ordinance update, and perhaps just an opportunity to answer any questions that might come up at that point.
Yeah, okay.
All right, anything else under due business and communication? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn and go into committee of the whole? We do not have executive session tonight, correct?
We do, but we could move to go into executive session at the conclusion of the committee of the whole.
Okay, all right.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Now, to start the committee of the whole, do we need the chairman vote again?
Do we have another motion to appoint trustee Cook as temporary chairperson for the committee of the whole meeting?
So may.
Hey, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Oh, second or...
You gotta...
I made the motion, I think, I don't know.
Do we need a second?
Yeah, you asked for a roll call.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Yeah.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim, and President Byrne.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, first item is approval of the committee of the whole minutes from July 20th, 2021, is that correct?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Any comments, questions, or corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim, trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is Centennial Real Estate in partnership with USAA Real Estate and Integrated Development, presentation of concept plans for a proposed assisted living facility located at Hawthorne Mall.
Okay, I got one question for, from Dr. Oppenheim. He wanted me to answer this, so I'll get it out there, get it out of the way. Are you there, guys?
Yes, we are.
Yep.
Okay, just this is for the petitioner, did they look at all at the Carson's Furniture Store site?
Mayor Byrne, this is John Michelle, and I'm gonna let Matt Phillips with Integrated Development answer that. They definitely did, and they chose the site where we're proposing them over that site for reasons which I'll let Matt articulate in his comments.
You know, hey, John, how big is that site for, where the old Carson's Furniture Store was?
It's about three acres, three, four acres, I don't have the exact...
Yeah, okay, this isn't my question, this is the good doctor's question, Dr. Oppenheim, who's in Europe.
Well, I mean, and it's a good question, and honestly, you know, we, we looked at that with, with Integrated, who is our partner, and they prefer the location because it's more integrated. I know their name is Integrated, but that's not a pun, and better for both their residents and for the health of the inside of the mall.
All right, well, yeah, you guys take that to four, I'll be quiet.
No, it's a, it's a great question, so thank you. John Michelle, Senior Vice President with Centennial Real Estate, great to see all of you again, been before you a number of times over the last few years, and appreciate the continued partnership. Hopefully, you've been by the mall site in the last month, months, and seen the amazing progress on Phase One Mixed Use Project, which is full bore under construction, and will turn over for occupancies in the beginning of, for retail and residential occupancies at the beginning of 2023. So, we're extremely excited about that. We sincerely appreciate your partnership, and hopefully, you see the fruits of all of our efforts. We are similarly appreciative to the staff for their help, and to Jim for his help on the redevelopment agreement, obviously a monumental piece of everything that's going on, and hope that the, the board sees that we're putting our money where our mouth is. So, with, with that introduction, I'll be brief, and I'll be here to help answer some questions at the end. Tonight, we're here to introduce Integrated Development, they're a seniors housing developer proposing a project on the northeast quadrant of the site, east of the AMC, inbound of the previously approved out parcels. Matt Phillips will introduce himself and his team, but we are here as the master developer, ensuring continuity of all of the developments on the project, making sure, we are partners in the senior housing development, as well as the multifamily development, and from our point of view, really important to be in the middle of it as the retail developer and the master plan developer. With that, I will ask Matt Phillips to please join me, or take over for me, to introduce the project that we are presenting to you all tonight, and I will be here if there are questions that I can help answer. Thanks.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Is it okay if I take the mask off?
Sure.
Okay. It's a little hard to speak with it. My name's Matt Phillips, as John said, kind of a native of the area. I grew up in Arlington Heights, and have spent going to hockey games and things like that, a good amount of time in the area. My background is senior housing, first with the company Classic Residence by Hyatt, which did, now is called V Senior Living, very high-end senior living projects, closest one here is, is in the Glen, and more recently with the company Senior Lifestyle, where we developed the Sheridan brand, and again, the closest community to here is the Sheridan in Green Oaks. So, well familiar with the market area, as well as, as the asset class. So, with me, on my team is Natalie Herzog, if we happen to get any questions on operations, and then our architects, SAS, Michael Aronson and Jim Weyer, who will give a little more detail about what we're proposing. But I just want to, you know, generally, first of all, thank you for, for your time. We've, we've met with staff and gone over the plans, revised some things based on those comments. What we're proposing is a luxury, a senior living project. I know they said it was assisted living, but it's actually predominantly independent living, so 82 independent living units, 60 assisted living units, and 20 memory care units. And one of the things that really attracted us to this opportunity was being part of a master redevelopment of the mall, where today's seniors, which are more active than ever, really want to be in, in communities where they can walk to things and be part of a larger community, and the mall offered us that opportunity. And Mayor asked, you know, the question about the site that we chose, when we were first given this opportunity, we're, three sites were proposed to us, the, the subject site, the Carson's site, and then a site along Route 60. And we looked at all three, and quite frankly, the site that we chose was the smallest of the three, and so became the most difficult to develop just from a land standpoint, but we felt it was, it was superior, because we really want to have visibility from a main street, which this site offered us from Milwaukee Road. Now, granted, the site off of 60 would have done that as well, but the, the site on the back of the mall would not have. We really liked the fact that we were gonna go right in next to the multifamily project that was under construction. I think anytime you look from a development standpoint at going into a redevelopment that's gonna take many years, you ask yourself, where am I gonna be in that sequence of events? And for our customers, whether they're seniors or just regular multifamily customers, don't want to be in a construction zone for the rest of their lives, and so going right next... And, and also, I would tell you that when we saw the plans that Centennial and Focus were doing on the multifamily, and being able to connect to the kind of the central node that's being created with the amphitheater, and being able to direct our community around that, and, and have integration, for lack of a better term, with our, with our project, that's why we chose this site. So, again, thank you for having us. Let me turn it over to our architects, and they'll give you some more details around the project itself.
Thank you.
Hey, man, I got a question.
Sure.
Remember I called you, what, about two weeks ago?
I do.
When I was checking out, what, the Sheridan project?
Yes.
Was that considered unincorporated what?
So, the Sheridan Green Oaks is, is in Green Oaks at the time that...
That's in Green Oaks, that's farther north of 176.
Yes, it was, it was, when, when we purchased that property, it was unincorporated Lake County, so this is on, on, Walk Egan Road, Walk Egan and Atkinson, just north of 176, and, yeah.
Did you have to annex this to...
Yes, yeah, we annexed, yeah, we did, we annexed in as part of that redevelopment.
Well, and just, just so everybody knows, that's what, is that two or three stories max?
The, and again, our architect might correct me, because they were the same architect we had there. I want to say the independent living there was four stories.
That's correct.
Yeah, four stories on the independent, the assisted is at least three, it may be four, and then the memory care was one story there.
Yeah, then you have about 16 villas, or like ranch houses?
Yeah, the, those, the, the villas are approved, but we haven't built those yet, but, but they were part of the overall plan to, to have, I think, 24 villas there.
Okay, so, I, I know what I'm doing, I'm, I'm integrating with the other project.
Yeah, the other Green Oaks Senior Living, correct? Yeah, right, right.
Okay, so, yeah, that one had it, yours did, okay. Hi, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you.
Jim? Sure. Thanks.
I'm gonna do the same thing. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Weyer, I'm with SAS Architects, I'm here with my partner, Michael Aronson. Our firm is located in Northbrook, Illinois, and we do, the majority of our work is senior living. We're a medium-sized firm, about 25 people, and so, we do a lot of work in this area, we've done a lot of senior, we've, we've worked with Matt quite a bit. So, what we've put together for this conceptual design is a, a series of conceptual images that I'd like to walk through. We modeled it loosely on what was presented on Phase One in terms of sequence and images. So, this, this first image is really to show the site context, and hopefully, I can do my arrow here. This property up here is the property that we chose, it's roughly two and three-quarter acres, and we chose that for, like Matt said, really nice visibility from Milwaukee Avenue, really ease of access. We wanted to create a formal entry to the building that would be very helpful for family members to pick up their parents, and it's got a covered entry and provide some temporary parking or, to allow for that to happen. We also wanted to really integrate with Phase One, we really wanted to be part of that exciting and dynamic new development there, and the amphitheater that was going on, so we felt that that's... So we felt that that site, we could do some really nice integration. And also because of the site, the way the site slopes, we could take advantage of being a little bit higher there and really look down on all that wonderful activity and give our residents the opportunity to both be on the upper level and the lower level through a transition element. How do I go to the next slide? Is that, yeah. Okay, so this next slide, we're zooming in closer to our site. And we've identified a few key elements of our design. One of them was that main courtyard entrance that provided a covered entrance and some temporary parking there for visitors, family members to pick up their loved ones. This happens to be actually the second floor. So really what we wanted to do is orient all our common space over a patio and overlooking the new development. And we really thought this was a beautiful way to kind of transition the site because we are kind of straddling two levels here. So number four is we're creating a lower plaza that also acts as a second entrance to our building. But then seven is a series of terrace landscaped retaining walls that end up being on the dining patio and then all the dining rooms face out through the south into the new development. Number six is a monumental stair that we really wanted to not only have for our residents, but also to allow mall patrons to be able to access both levels and use our lower plaza and use our upper plaza. And we are also looking at really creating a water feature there too. So we wanted to create amenity to the mall and have something that was dynamic and kinetic and just wasn't standalone. But it is really some movement of the water and gave an opportunity for people to really go and have lunch and maybe take photographs, something really fun and exciting for that. And we wanted to be part of that new outdoor mall redevelopment. So the other points, we have an access point to a parking garage. So the parking garage is located on the northwest corner. We have an entrance, a couple entrances here, and we're really trying to use the site. It's a slope parking area, so we're working with the site. And number ten is a service entrance.
Okay, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
All right, what about the balcony? You got balconies on any of these, you know, where people are self-sufficient in the ambulatory and all the above?
Yes, all the independent living apartments have balconies. And right now, the assisted living apartments all have balconies. So we really want people to enjoy the outdoors and be able to look at those, the views of the site that we're creating in Phase One and Phase Two.
Okay, and then, so you're going to encourage the general public from, you know, the mall or elsewhere to come into the lower level of your building?
Not so much, I think, as visitors that can come in, but we're encouraging them to really use our plaza. So in this image, you can, hopefully I can circle this here. You can see we're creating this lower plaza that's really level with the new Phase One and the parking area over here. So we really want them to use that as well as the new kind of verticals.
I can't, in all deference to you, I can't see anything which isn't your fault.
Okay.
Okay, okay, with the balconies, that's nice because people can go outside. I think that's important just to go outside with a little light, you know?
Right, and in fact, we have an image later on that'll show that we're creating some balconies that off of living spaces that really afford residents to overlook that amphitheater and enjoy some of the wonderful-
Oh, yeah, 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 that's right, yeah, 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 okay.
So this happens to be at the lower level, which is at this road level here. And this is the new ench, new formal entry. And we, on this level, we really created all the common spaces and we really wanted to have something dynamic when you come in or to look and see through the building. And there's going to be a bistro there and a little terrace and kind of be at that level of the plaza. So we really wanted to have that create some excitement is when you came into the, when you come into the building. The next slide shows the third level where we're starting to integrate memory care and assisted living. So this wing over here that I'm, the lower C shape is memory care and it has its own secure garden. And then assisted living is at the top there in the C and they have their own garden. So everybody really has really nice views. There's a lot of lovely garden space in this building. And then this is also capping off the top of the parking deck. So we're not looking down at parking, but we're looking down on the garden. The C shape to the right is all independent living. The corner units have two views, large balconies, really making use of that corner. So that'll be really nice. All the apartments have full kitchens. They'll have laundry in there, so, and they're really spacious units, ranging from eight hundred square feet up to thirteen hundred square feet for the apartment. So they're very luxurious apartments. And then as we go up the building, these are just more of the floor plan. So as we get higher, we're really just, all the units are stacking and you can see all the balconies off the building. But independent living to the right and then assisted living to the left. The independent portion to the right is six stories and then the assisted living on the left is five stories. So it creates some interesting massing on the building and it steps down the height of the building as well. And then this is the top level where this is the sixth floor. And then there's some really nice rooftop gardens for residents and the view out to the west. So that'll be really nice, another garden spot for residents. These next images are, we're drawing some inspiration from Phase One. So we wanted to really use that language, that they're using a modern vernacular language of these facades and materials. We don't want to match it exactly, but we want to be in that style. So we're drawing some inspiration from that. But these inspirational images are really some of the images that we started to look at when we, when we start to design the exterior of the building. So just working from the top there, just kind of a mixture of materials to really help out break down the mass, some larger glass areas and more of an urban feeling. The center one is a more of that formal entrance that we were talking about with a covered drop-off. The next image is a dining patio terrace that we would create off of our dining rooms. The next image is a, the lower plaza with some really lively paving and some planters and want that to be a real lively space. And then the next image is a memory care garden. So this would be one of the gardens that are on top of the rooftop. This happens to have some miniature golf on there that would be something that we would consider. And then just a series of other images, you know, an idea of what that water feature could look like. This is another image of what the assisted living courtyard could look like. And then later on, when we look at the perspectives, having a common balcony that really overlooks that amphitheater is something that we are inspired by.
Okay, I got a question for you.
Yep.
I guess this is, you know, maybe more technical review, but Matt, are you doing parapet walls?
We will have parapet walls on the roof, yes.
Okay, that'll be visible to whoever, like a drone?
Yeah, we're up a little, we're higher at six floors, but we really wanted to vary the facades. You'll see that in some of the sketches and that having parapet walls really allows us to vary the height of the walls and have some interesting massing on the, on the architecture.
But it's safer, right?
What's that?
It's safer?
Safer, yes. And then we'd, we'll do some-
Here, I got it. And what about separation between floors? Does it, it'll be like a Span Creek?
This will be all light gauge metal framing. The floor will be concrete. The rating between the floors will be an hour. So it's a safe building, it's all non-combustible construction. This won't be wood construction.
Is that, you know, I've heard of Mike Atkinson, is that better than Span Creek?
Yeah, well, he just said concrete. Do you mean reinforced concrete panels or planks?
We'd have a metal deck on top of the steel joists and then that would get, those pans would get filled with concrete.
Well, it's fully non-combustible, Mayor. There's, it, depending on how they design it, it could have, it could deflect more easier under loading than reinforced concrete planks, which could create, you could hear someone walk above you more readily with that kind of design.
Yeah, well, Span Creek, you can't hear anybody above.
It's a lot harder to hear someone above, that's correct.
Right, so what, where are we weighing in on that? I'll ask the petitioner that. Where are you weighing in on that, in case you got a weightlifter living upstairs?
Yeah, so we, we've done several buildings like that and we always hire an acoustical engineer to study the STC ratings and the impact ratings between floors. And actually, I think sometimes the system's better because our ceiling is really isolated from the structure with resilient clips. And so that kind of separates some of that vibration. But with the concrete and the insulation and the separation from the structure, it really creates a very soundproof floor-to-floor. Same thing with the wall, the wall, the walls, the demising walls, we do the same thing. We have an acoustical engineer that we hire to design all that.
All right, so let's slow down here to the speed of sound, okay? So what is, how does the fire department feel about what they use to do separation between floors in there? Mike Atkinson?
How the fire, well, I could speak for the village and relate to how the fire districts have reacted to-
No, I know, but I mean, what's the fire department's recommendation? You got a lot of old people in here, they need to probably get people out of there if there's a fire.
Okay, a couple, it's hard for me to talk for the fire district, but a couple of things they're going to want is, they're going to want a, an elevator that's larger than is typical for this type of building so they can get a stretcher in and out of there easily. Also, I would, just for a point of information, the fire rating on the floor, ceiling and wall separations per hour amendments are two hours rather than one hour. As far as the building being completely non-combustible, the village is certainly supportive of that and I think the fire district would be very supportive of that too. That it's actually a higher level of construction from what we've seen at the Atworth and even Hawthorne Row. That's driven by the building code requirements, given that the building is more than four stories in height.
All right, okay, Mike, just two, will they have, will they be able to go, will fire, fire equipment be able to go behind the building? Is there going to be a road all the way around this place?
Yeah, though, and there is access to all four sides. You've got Ring Road to the north. You have an access drive that's part of Hawthorne Row to the south. Then you have Mall Drive to the east and a parking field to the west. They may have comments regarding the great difference between the front and rear of the building, east and west side of the building. But right now, at least at this concept stage, it looks like they have good access to all four sides.
Yeah, they're absolutely paramount, okay? You got to be able to get, God forbid, you know, the fire trucks back there, you know, on a, you know, on a certain surface. Now, last but not least, and I know this is going to make, you know, these guys cringe, but what about using iron piping in the building for sanitary sewage? You know, so that you don't hear everybody's toilet flushing? How is that prevented now?
What I would recommend, Mr. Mayor, is PVC for drain, waste and vent that is very well insulated for noise just because that material will stand up better over time than cast iron.
That's typically what we do, and especially when we go to a horizontal, we come to a vertical horizontal, that's where we heavily insulate that.
Yeah, so somebody isn't listening to somebody flushing their toilet, draining their sink or doing laundry or whatever else they do.
Right, and what's nice about it is all the apartments stacked. So most of the plumbing will just be vertical and we won't get too many laterals. But I think that's where you really get the sound where it's dropping several stories and transferring horizontal. The building is very safe, all the stairs will be CMU block, same with the elevator. So that's two hours and so, and it's totally sprinklered and fire alarm, so very safe, very safe building.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay.
Okay, other than that, I, you're welcome to Vernon Hills. I think it'll be a great project and a great addition, so.
Well, thank you. I could just finish off, there's some material selections. Majority masonry walls want to be similar materials to Phase One. Just some conceptual perspectives. This is showing the relationship to the seventh story to the north. We're lower and shorter than that building. And these are just some images generated from our computer design and then we are doing just some conceptual hand sketches. So you could see how we're using the different materials to really break down the building. This happens to be an image of the entrance courtyard. The next image is of that south elevation with the tower with the balconies on there that are really open to the public. There's a lower plaza, a series of step gardens and then that grand vertical staircase really, you know, drawing people up to that second level. And then the final image would really be the image from looking at the west side where we've got the gardens on top of the parking structure. So our access is here, closest to us. That road slopes up to the second level and just showing how really those wings are really providing a lot of interesting architectural massing and a lot of shade and shadow and having those-
So in looking, especially this drawing right here, the, the whole building is not one giant six-story building. There's, the north half of it is some places four and five stories?
This is, this is five stories and then the independent living is six stories beyond. So yeah, it steps down here and then really with the different wings, it really-
That middle area where the, where the gardens in that are, that's at the top, that's like three stories?
Correct, yeah, three stories, yeah, on top of the garage. So thank you for listening and happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from anybody on the board? Trustee Sheng?
Thank you. Couple of questions, I don't know if the architect can answer this, but for Centennial, was there something else that was planned for this site? Or how long have you had this plan? Were you looking at hotels, other retail, event space?
Hi, thanks, great question. And we have, this is relatively new to the site plan. It definitely wasn't part of any of our previous visions. So the market sort of came to us and then that's how we selected this site. We definitely didn't have it earmarked for retail. It's second level out parcel and we have enough out parcels out there. It, you know, it could have been a hotel or something like that. The hotel market is incredibly tepid right now for obvious reasons. So senior housing is definitely warranted from a market standpoint. And after some education, I personally came, and Centennial came to appreciate the synergy that senior housing has with the rest of the project in that location. And frankly, it's pretty exciting that they figured out how to build a building like this on that piece of property because the use and the densification is really fantastic for the site, from my perspective.
If, you may, I have a few more questions. If you choose, if this goes forward and you choose to expand the retail open area space that we see where the Sears was and, you know, you're kind of pigeonholed right now, would you move it, where would you create that more space if you had to? I would suggest that first drawing there. Would you go south in that parking lot there?
So the Carsons right here is vacant and will not be a department store. So the retail redevelopment is definitely focused on this piece of property?
You understand what I'm saying because you're kind of creating just a small area when you're, obviously, the project is big. To get your maximum return, you would probably want to expand how well Melody Farms has been doing with a very large open space. Is that a consideration, tearing down Carsons and making that an open space?
Open space in the sense of like a park or open-air retail?
Open-air retail.
Yeah, definitely, open-air retail, not enclosed retail is what the future of retail is going to be. So we are continuing to evaluate how we can do that in a way that's complementary to what's there today and will satisfy market demand. So I, yeah, I think your vision is consistent with what we're working to figure out. We'll be back here in the next months with further articulation of ideas like that, for sure.
And just two more, if you will. Is this within the Tiff District? Is this parcel within the Tiff District?
It is, yes.
Okay, and then how many current, this is probably not for you, but how many current senior living centers do we have in Vernon Hills today or in progress in construction?
I can think of four off the top of my head, Hawthorne Lakes- I can think of four off the top of my head, Hawthorne Lakes, the former, which is now Brookfield, the former park by, off of Milwaukee Avenue, which is also owned by Brookfield, we have the Springs, a memory care facility off of Milwaukee Avenue, uh, and then the facility, uh, off of Deer Path across from, uh, the fire station, the name evades me right now.
Victory Center?
Victory Center.
Victory Center, and then another one that's a memory care facility a little south there, yeah. I think that's it, we might be missing one, but I think that's it.
What, what's the one where the, um, what's going up?
The Everly?
The Everly.
That's fifty-five.
That's fifty, but this is, but this is independent living too. You got eighty rooms, independent living, sixty of assisted and twenty of memory care, so they all should be considered, correct? So it's probably more than, is that possibly more than five then?
Can I, can I interject something here? This, this is, this is very close, it really is an, an image of Victory Center, but they have the added memory care units. Does anybody hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
You understand what I'm saying? So set aside almost all, and, and, you know what, and it's, it's true, Brookdale's got, you know, independent, assisted living, but they just got an independent assisted living, I believe.
Yes, that's right, he had eighty independent rooms.
They don't have any memory care in there, so, uh, you know, so this building, you know, it, it's got a certain uniqueness, but it's not, you know, it, it, it's similar to any number of other buildings we got in town, where, uh, the old Hawthorne Lake, that's extended, that's ex- that's extended care there, I believe.
But Mike, this is luxury, Tim.
Mike Atkinson. I think there...
I'm, I'm not sure...
You really got extended care and skilled nursing available there.
I, I agree, that's correct.
I just wanna make sure that...
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure who else can do that, other, you know, you got the memory care, so on and so forth, you know, but, uh, the full-blown, you know, uh, skilled nursing facility, I think it is the old Hawthorne Lake, which is also in Brookfield, you know?
My concern is, is there gonna, is there too much competition in town? Are you gonna have trouble filling the rooms? We would not wanna see that, obviously.
Let Matt answer that question, that, that's, you know, that's his expertise, so...
Well, I wanna comment, 'cause I'm getting the impression this is high-end luxury, so similar to like the Glen, I think the demographic is just totally completely different, 'cause my question is like, what's the, what's the cost to stay here versus what, what else is out there? I'm sure you, you know, you could define luxury, obviously, you know, whatever, you know, the sizier spaces, you know, the amenities...
Well, these guys are offered, you, you're not just renting the joint, you, you gotta pay for meals and all that other stuff.
That's correct, I mean, I, our view is, is that, um, while there's other communities here in Vernon Hills as well as surrounding, like in Green Oaks where we built, there's, there's a lack of supply, um, at the higher end of the market.
That's how I look at it, Mike, let's, it's completely a different target market, they're not going after that other surrounding marketplace, 'cause quite honestly, I'm assuming it's quite expensive.
Do we think the grounds that it's, it's residing on, um, justify the cost that you're charging, is my point? I mean...
If people pay it, that's not...
If, if they pay it, correct, but I mean...
Right, but we're, we're looking at high-end residential going into the, this mall anyway, right? So we're not looking at middle, you know, the, similar to the Atworth, I mean, that's high-end, I mean, the, the cost to live there, just, it does, it's really not accessible to the masses. This is a specific market, as far as I'm concerned.
And if I'm correct, Phase One and, or Phase, the, the two residentials going in, they're not marked for senior, they're just... Studios and up to a couple of three bedrooms overall, right? Oh, that's correct, but it's not marketed.
Was there any thought given?
Can I ask a question? What's the demographics here? Is the, is, is the youngest person in there probably seventy-two, seventy-three years old, even in the independent living?
Yes, that, you know, probably the average age when, when you, you know, span the spectrum of the independent, assisted, and memory cares, probably late seventies, perhaps even, even a little older.
All right, well, what, what, just give us the, give us the census from your shared location, you know, up in, uh, you know, Green Oaks, you got any of it, census? Just, just give us a copy of it.
Was, was there any thought given, with this building being as tall as it was, and the fact that the, the ground itself...
I'd like a copy.
Because it's up on this, on the Sears upper level, um, that already puts it several stories above the Route sixty level. Uh, was there any thought given to swapping maybe Phase Two with this building? Was that what you were talking about with the Route sixty location? 'Cause then you would have a, a shorter, like, three-story building up on this upper level that's already two stories above the, the rest of the parking lot, and I was just wondering if that was, it, was that what you were talking about when you said Route sixty?
Well, the, the Route sixty is, is what John was talking about, being kind of the next area that, that Centennial's gonna look at, um, you know, in the, in the middle with the outdoor retail, so...
The former, the former Carson's?
The former Carson's.
Okay.
The other thing, I think it's worth noting in response to that, would be the...
The other thing that's worth noting in response to that would be the, um, slide that was put up by SAS on the relationship of the proposed building to the Milton across, um, Ring Drive, and, and that, that shows kind of how the proposed building's in scale with the Milton, um, and, and in many ways, you know, represents kind of a transition, a residential transition.
Yeah, but my, my comment was that Milton isn't, Milton is so far back from where you jump up, this is gonna be right at the edge of that, so it's gonna be, you know, it'll visually look a little larger, that's, that was my only, you know, thought with the, the possible swap of that.
Dave Brown, what are your thoughts? Dave Brown?
Is your question about the overall project?
Yes.
I think there's some very good things that we see here, um, the, the questions that I have is really looking at the parking garage and, um, how much queuing happens off of Ring Drive before you get into the parking garage. Um, that's one thing they're looking into, and we, if this goes to technical review, we'll be able to comment and work through that with them. Uh, another positive thing as part of this project would be, they are looking at Museum Boulevard and, uh, Ring Drive in that, uh, odd, uh, intersection, and, uh, making that into a T-intersection and including a pedestrian crossing, uh, portion too. In terms of, uh, traffic, uh, this, uh, this village has spent four point four million dollars of fixing sixty and twenty-one, so I think the major intersection can withstand this type of development, and, uh, as was awarded recently, A-LAMP will be extending the Milwaukee Avenue northbound left turn lane onto Ring and maximizing that, so I think in terms of traffic, it's just really can't, will they be backing up, uh, traffic onto Ring Drive when you get into the parking garage? But we've had conversations, they're looking into that, but that's, uh, one of the things I'd like to learn more about.
Where's guest parking for all the residential that's planned right now, Phase One, A, One B? If you wanna, if your family coming to visit?
Uh, well, resident parking is within certain floors of the parking structure, which is, uh, within the middle of both Phase One and Phase Two, uh, and then guest parking is, is, is the parking fields that you see around each of the structures.
So is there ADA parking nearby those structures that'll be designated?
Yes.
Any other questions from board members on this? Questions or comments? Then that east side of the building, you're actually gonna be removing some of, I mean, it's, there's, there's gonna be some change in topography there to make it meet Ring Drive, correct?
A little bit, there, there's a, a rise there, but yes, a little bit.
Anything else from any, Dave Brown?
Just one question for the petitioner, the, um, what is the dimension from back of curb of Ring Drive and the, uh, the building?
I think we're about, uh, twenty, twenty feet.
Any other comments, questions, board members, anybody from staff had any, anything?
If they could just comment on the overall height of this building on the east side in comparison to the height of Hawthorne Road to the south?
Uh, the east side, uh, floor elevation is about six feet higher than the...
If you could, if you could come up to the mic for...
I'm sorry, overall building height from grade to top of, top of roof?
Yeah. Overall building height is, um, we have is about eighty feet.
Okay, and then Hawthorne...
Which is, which is lower than the seven, the seven-story across the way, and our building's actually lower than where that seven-story starts, so we're much lower.
And then Hawthorne Row is forty-five feet above grade. So just so the boards are aware, there's a thirty-foot height difference between what's being presented to you tonight and what was approved as part of Hawthorne Row.
Meaning, meaning sea-level height above the current Hawthorne Row?
From, exactly. Measured from grade on the east side of the structures, measured from grade to the top of the roof.
Well, how do you feel about that? Is it too high?
You know, I struck...
That's significant.
It, it's significant, uh, yes.
Yeah, that's significant.
That's why I wanted the board to hear where...
Yeah, that sticks out. Yeah.
That's a bit offset, though, with the fact that the north half of the building is two stories shorter than the very south half of the building, correct?
Yeah, and when you look at the streetscape, you could look at it a couple of different, there is a, it's a thirty-foot difference, and it is quite a big difference, that's why I wanted to make sure it was clear for the board to understand that. When you're looking at the streetscape from Milwaukee Avenue, what you'll see is forty-five feet for Hawthorne Row, uh, seventy-five feet, uh, for the, uh, independent care facility that's presented to you tonight, and then when you get to the Milton, it's eighty-one feet tall, but the grade there is five feet tall, so it'll really read like a, like an eighty-six foot tall structure, so it will be stepping up, moving south to north, uh, but yes, there's a concern regarding the adjacency of Hawthorne Row, which, which is really the main entrance to the mall, the way it's designed now, with relation to the indepe- care facility, it's quite a difference.
Do you like to see it lower?
I'd like the board to discuss it from staff's perspective, that's a big difference, yeah.
Well, the, the top of Hawthorne Row then, as you're saying, is, is about seven hundred and twenty-six feet above sea level currently, as it's proposed?
Yeah, that's the, yeah, thank you, that'd be the math, so...
It's too high.
Okay.
That's too high. I get the skyline effect, but we're not a city. The whole thing, that's like the skyline, I drive into the city, you see the skyline, it's like, does that, but we're not a city, I get the urban feel, but that's not...
Yeah, I, I...
Yeah, especially if it's the entrance, that doesn't look good.
Yeah, you're kind of enclosing yourself, and you're blocking the viewpoint, and, like I said earlier, if, if this area was earmarked for retailer, outdoor venue space, that is right on Milwaukee Avenue, much more attractive, and then, can this be pushed back? Can this be pushed back into the AMC lot, in the Pennies lot? All the Pennies I know that own their own lots, so, uh, it's just, you're really, like I said, you're pigeonholing yourself, all that beautiful outdoor venue space that everybody's looking forward to.
The, the outdoor space is at the, at the edge of...
Oh, I know, I see it, I do.
And, and to me, it's, and I mean, it's all perfect, but, you know, we're, we're part of the, the gathering, but it's encouraging its own outdoor space, plus pushing the, or giving the residents the ability to use the public outdoor space, so, you know, it is, it is pretty strategically positioned, and to me, to me, it doesn't block anything other than when you're coming out from the building, from a viewpoint, or something like that. And we've worked closely with Focus Atlantic, um, our partners on multifamily mixed-use Phase One.
Can you, John, can you come up and use the, the mic, or use one of the mics for this? Yeah, thanks.
Hello, um, we've been coordinating as a development group with our multifamily mixed-use developers, um, and Integrated and Matt, to sort of make sure that the campus reads as one, uh, and that all the common spaces are for the benefit of all, and, and the, the positioning of the building as it sits today strategically accomplishes that goal, we can't push back into the AMC lot because AMC needs parking for its lot, and as you correctly stated, J.C. Penney owns its building today.
Are, are you concerned at all that you're gonna be looking too much like a residential area versus a commercial area?
No, we, we, we think we're gonna look like a mixed-use area, and we think it's critical for our success to activate the campus with residents, um, with commercial businesses, and senior housing accomplishes two goals for us. It gives us residential and it allows us to develop residential, senior, senior housing at the same time we're developing market rate, we can't develop two market rate projects at the same time, so it really helps activate the campus, which clearly needs lots of activation, um, and we intend for it to be mixed-use, this is part of the downsizing and the activation process for us.
Craig, what do you say, you say it's too high, what do you think?
That's the impression, that's the feeling I'm getting.
So less floors?
Yeah.
This, well, the southern half of the building, if it could be five instead of six, might be.
Right.
I mean, if that works for, I don't know how that works on your performing that, but it, it would be, I believe, a little more appealing.
Well, the southern half now is what, seven?
'Cause that would, what, 'cause...
With the elevation change?
Roughly, a story's roughly fourteen feet, so, um, in, in going with what Mike Atkinson said, if, if one were to cut off, that would cut about half of that thirty-foot di- difference off.
Maybe have P&amp;Z look at it. I mean, we could have P&amp;Z look at, I'd look for their opinion, I mean, heck, they got some qualified people on that board, more so than me, but from an aesthetics perspective, I'm getting the impression that it's, people are not necessarily a hundred percent, you know, thrilled that it's significantly higher than Hawthorne.
Something that we need to take close look at, for sure, yes.
Exactly, there, yeah, that's fine.
The courtyard, I'm looking at this, um, I guess it'll be on the east side, the courtyard on the east side, is that enclosed or is that accessible to the public? I know the south portion you have is accessible. Do you like...
To the east side, the entry?
Yeah, the east side of the building, it's kind of like in that, I'm looking at, if you, I'm, I'm a few pages down here, I'm looking at some artist's renderings.
Uh, so that is open, that, that's our main courtyard?
There, with the blue pond, the circle pond, that is open?
Yeah, that's open, that, that's some, uh, that's parking for the main entrance, but it's open to, uh, major, patrons of the mall, yes, it's, it's not closed off.
And we're sure that residents who may want a little more...
Well, one of the best ones that shows the height of that and how open that is, if you can go down to your, the one right after your, uh, materials?
Oh, yeah, I've got it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the one right after the materials.
No, I see that, Tom, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's really open, and I feel like when you come in here, it doesn't really look like a five-story building, it's just really stepping back, there's a lot of wings that come out, and I think we were very careful on the south side to, to step the building back as well and create these step plazas and terraces, so it's just not like a, you know, a six-story wall there, but it really steps back and creates some urban plazas for, for the mall patrons as well as the residents. It's right up, not right on the road.
Other comments or questions from staff or board?
I just, one more thing to make the board aware, on the north side, the north elevation, that's at least the plan we have in front of us now and it's just a concept plan. That shows a 15-foot setback to Ring Road, Ring Drive. And now in comparison, even though this building is shorter than the Milton, if you go across the street to the Milton, uh, that's about an 80-foot setback from Ring Drive. So when you go, when you're going from east to west on Ring Drive, that six-story building with a 15-foot setback from Ring Drive is, it's going to have.
It's going to be right on top of you.
It's going to look, it's, it's going to have a point in, in appearance.
It's going to have size, 100%. And that's why I'm more concerned, like if it's a luxury price tag, is the person paying for that going to want a 15-foot setback or an 80-foot setback?
Looking at the view.
Well, is 15 going to be a variance of any kind or with this being a PUD, is that different?
Yeah, well, well, as part of the PUD, we'll identify that as a variation or departure, yes.
Because our ordinary setback is 30-ish?
Excuse, uh. I'm shooting from the hip here, it's, uh, there's a, there's a landscape buffer requirement and a building setback requirement.
Okay.
Somewhere in the 30 to 40-foot range.
Yeah, okay. What would be next step after tonight?
I think, I think staff and the petitioners heard all the board's comments. We've identified some concerns that we need to work on. So if the board is in agreement, the next step would be to go to technical review, staff level review. We can dig in and do a more detailed review with more detailed plans and address some of the issues that were raised at tonight's meeting.
Trustee Cook, you can take a consensus of each of the board members relative to that question.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I wanted.
Rather than a motion.
So is, um, trustee Schenck, well, we were, it's really not a motion, it's just a, a consensus to have moved, because this is only conceptual right now.
It's yes or no?
Can we move forward with looking at it and looking at our comments? Trustee Markford?
Go forward.
Okay.
Do we, do you need to make a motion?
No, nope.
And taking into account the comments and, and that's when you get to give your speech about.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you, you finished the consensus?
Yeah, I think everybody's, everybody says, yeah, let's move forward and, and with, taking into account all the comments that have been made tonight and everything.
So we, we'd like to remind petitioners that this is not a formal approval, nor is this a guarantee that a subsequent plan will be approved. This is an opportunity tonight to get feedback from the board, which you received. You'll next move on to the technical review process, which will be administered through the building department. You'll meet with various other departments that work with the village, including fire, police, planning, engineering and, and public works. They will give you further comments to help develop your plans to a high level. You'll then be scheduled for a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. They will make a recommendation ultimate, you'll, you'll come back before this body, the committee of the whole, and then on to the village board for final approval. But the important part of everything I just said is this is not a formal approval nor a, a guarantee of future approvals.
Understood.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else to come before the board? That's it for the agenda for tonight, correct? Okay, what kind of motion do we need now?
If I can make that, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
Motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing land acquisition and the review of executive session minutes and to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. And then we need a roll call on that.
Okay, is, is there a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markford?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka?
Aye.
Chairman Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenck?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim? President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. And will not be conducting any future business tonight.